Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the meeting, planning board meeting for Hatfield of December 5th, 2018. Planning board members to my left, Michael Poschek, myself, Bob Wagner, the chair, Paul Dostal, and Paul Labby. We have just two items on the agenda for tonight. In the public forum, we have Alex Hart and John Lackman, or either of them here? Okay, so having not heard from them, we'll move on. So we have a hearing for the Green Skies Solar Development, Zach Sewicki. I'm just going to read this as I do for each public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and read the meeting notice, so it's in the record. And we'll provide the applicant or their representative the opportunity to describe the project, and if they have any specific requests of the planning board, for example, waiver grants. And then, at that time, after they're completed, I'll ask if there's any supporters of the project here, present tonight, and entertain any of their questions or comments. If there are questions, they'll make those questions through the chair to the applicant. And then, after the supporters are done, I'll ask if there's any opponents of the project, and again, entertain any concerns, or if they have questions of the applicants made through the chair, we'll handle those. The board will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, or any supporters or opponents, at that time, and then we'll officially close the public hearing. The board will then deliberate on the project, during which time, we may ask additional questions of the applicant, the supporters or the opponents. And then, upon completion of its deliberations, we'll, one of three things could happen. We could seek a motion to approve the project with or without conditions. We could seek a motion to reject the project, or a motion to continue the hearing to a future date with instructions to the applicant. So with that all said, I'll just read for the record that on December 5th, 2018, at 6:30 PM, the planning board of the town of Hatfield will hold a public hearing at Town Hall. The applicant Clean Focus Renewables of Louisville, Colorado, assuming that's how they say it in Colorado, is seeking a special permit with site plan approval from the planning board pursuant to Section 6.0 Development Methods and 9.0 Definitions, subsection 9.634, Solar Energy Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Installations of the Town of Hatfield Bylaw. Zoning bylaw. At Zero Main Street, owned by the Chang Family Trust of South Deerfield, Assessor's Map 202, Lot 9, zoned rural residential for the purpose of installing, owning, operating, and maintaining a 5-megawatt AC ground-mounted solar array. And the application was available at the town clerk's office for people to view. So with having said all that, I'll now ask the applicant or their representative to come forward and make a presentation to those assembled, as well as the folks that are going to watch this on television, so.
Can you position us towards you?
No, I think if you position it that way, because we have copies of these maps, so that would be great. And if you could identify yourself for the record, and then, actually, bring that mic around in front of you there, so you can just, yeah. I think that's just going to pick you up if you're there. Okay, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman and the commission, thank you for your time tonight. I'm Zach Sewicki, and I'm with Clean Focus Renewables and Green Skies Renewable Energy. I'm from Colorado, but Green Skies is based in Middletown, Connecticut. We're proposing a 5-megawatt AC solar array at Zero Main Street, owned by Chang Family Trust. Site access will be off of, not directly off of Main Street, I forget the name of this crossroad here. Really, it's a straightforward project. I think we'll have, I think, a little over 20,000 solar panels, seven-foot chain-length fence for the majority of the site. Along Main Street, we're proposing a decorative cedar fence, and I think in the past, we talked about enhanced vegetative screening. Anything that you guys would like to see on that front, we can include there. We're open to your ideas, but we would like to probably go with, you know, a mix of arborvitae or native evergreens. We are currently working with the Conservation Commission. We have a third-party wetland study and report. We've submitted to the DEP and have been in conversations with both the Conservation Commission and Mark Stinson from the Western Regional Office. We have one open item with the commission, so we're still having ongoing discussions with them. There are hydric soils in the northwest portion of the site, and I think what we're trying to do is find a common ground and possibly redraw a line to sort of avoid hydric soils that the DEP might find more sensitive than they've previously mapped. So on the conservation side of things, still open. In addition to that, there is potential habitat for the vesper sparrow on site. We have not seen any evidence of the vesper sparrow yet, but we've submitted a form to the NHESP for review of that, and so that will also be an ongoing discussion. That's on the conservation side of things. On the construction side of things, we're aiming to construct the project probably late spring, early summer 2019. In previous talks with you guys, you said you wanted us to access the site from Whately, so that's not an option, or that's not an issue, we can definitely do that. We anticipate the construction phase to probably be about three months. This is a really straightforward site. If you look through the plans, you'll see that slope really isn't an issue for us. It's generally pretty flat, we've got good access, we can come in and build this array pretty quickly. Similarly, on the storm water or erosion control side of things, nothing major here that we have found. Our engineers believe is that a sort of a low-growth New England seed mix will go a long way in terms of maintaining or controlling erosion within the project area. In addition to that, you'll see on the southern end of the site plan, we've got wetlands, and we are utilizing 100-foot wetland setbacks. We're trying to go for an RDA with conservation and just completely avoid those areas. Within the project area, we will not be using pesticides, herbicides, anything like that. We have an O&amp;M team down in Middletown, and we will come and mow and regularly maintain the site, so. I think that's a good overview, if you have any questions.
Well, I'm sure we'll have questions, but for the sake of information to the folks here and also on television, can you just explain then how, what the process will be, or the installation of the panels themselves, and then the road? What will be the makeup of the road, and the, how will the panels be installed?
Right, so we will build up our own road into the site, and it'll probably be like a compacted crushed gravel mix. And we'll also implement sort of a vehicle tracking control measures at the entrance of the project area, as, you know, one of many erosion control measures. Within the project area, or construction itself, we will be coming in and driving steel piles into the ground, coming back through and putting racking on those piles, and then mounting panels to that. And then, from there, we'll have an electrical team come in, wire the panels together, and connect to our equipment pad where we have battery containers, inverters, transformers, et cetera.
So those, so the panels will be mounted essentially on spikes, as opposed to any kind of concrete-footed structure?
Correct, yeah. So they're basically like steel piers, we'll drive those into the ground. They really leave no impact, no toxic chemicals, and when we're done with the project, after 25 years, we'll come and pull them out and recycle them.
And what about any preparation of the site?
Preparation of the site? There's not a lot that has to be done, really. If there's any uncontrolled vegetation on the site, we'll have to clear that. We've so far not implemented any grading plan, so really, it's clearing any vegetation that, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I got a question when you're done.
Yeah, go for it.
Do you envision removing any topsoil from this property?
No, not at this moment, no.
Grading it, or probably grading it, but I've seen projects where they take the topsoil and they push it off to a side, get a big pile there, and level it all out, and then somehow mysteriously, the topsoil disappears, it's sold, or
Right.
Used at some other project.
Yeah, so this is good soil, we don't want it to leave the site, and that's one thing that our civil engineer is keen on, is keeping the soil within the project area.
Okay, so we should, we should, if you are done with what you consider to be your presentation, we'll move to ask if there's any supporters, but also, and then opponents. But can you just confirm where you stand with the Conservation Commission?
Yes, so I've been working with Wilma Davis, who's working with Bob Hennessy, and Bob Hennessy right now is tasked with finding a third-party peer reviewer, someone who is going to visit the site with conservation, with my team's wetland scientists, our own third-party, and Mass DEP. And they're basically going up into this northwest corner of the property and verifying some lines, basically, to make sure that the hydric soils aren't more serious than we think they are. When our team was out there, they didn't find any wetlands in this area, but the way wetlands are regulated en masse, the presence of hydric soils requires further investigation. So where we currently stand is, we're waiting on Mr. Hennessy to hire a reviewer and to visit the site with our scientists.
Okay.
And I guess on that note, if we do in fact need to avoid some of these hydric soils, then you'll see the northwest corner here of the array move in with the fence line as well.
Okay. All right, so you can sit down if you want, but be prepared to answer questions. So are there any individuals in the room who are, would like to comment in support of the project? Okay, yeah?
We own the land, and we
Can you name?
My name is Mr. Shane, a family trust, and, yeah, we support this project because the land there is not really good for growing vegetables. It's a little bit too wet, you know? It's hard to rent it out. I beg people to take it. So if, you know, we can make green energy with this, it's a plus-plus. It's, you're using that land for, you're contributing to society with solar power. Instead of, right now, I got one farmer using the land, he doesn't want to use it, I almost have to pay the guy to use it, I mean, so, you know, it's tough, like, a wet year, you don't get anything, and you can't, a lot of things you can't grow there, so it's, you know?
Mr. Shane, while you're up on the floor, is the property currently in 61A? Chapter 61A?
Yes, yes.
It is. So have you, have you registered with the town Board of Selectmen? Because this will have to be, come out of chapter 61A.
Yes.
So have you actually filed that paperwork with the assessor's office and the Board of Selectmen?
No, when I was, you know, I figured you have to wait till you get approval, so I'm not sure.
Well, the town does have, if it is going to be removed from 61A, there is a process that would allow the town, if they so chose, to exercise a right of first refusal. I know that you're going to continue to own the property, so you would want to get that information in to the town, I think as soon as possible, because this is not, because under the state law, they're not considering shifting farm ground to solar panels. They consider that to be a change of use, so it would take, would bump you out of 61A. So you'd need to, you're going to have to look into that. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, well, since there's seven or eight people here, I'm assuming that there's some opposition to the project, so I'll take comments from any opponents to the project. Again, you can make your comments to the board, if you have questions of the committee, or of the applicant, or their representative, just make them through us. We don't want to get into any kind of arguing situation, so.
Can I just ask a question? I'm not against or supporting
I know you want to be identified.
Yeah, so I just want to know, Darryl Williams, Depot Road in Hatfield Dairy Farm, and I just, there's about 100 acres there, or whatever, I'm just wondering, how much of this is going to be covered in solar panels?
29, 29 acres.
And can you tell me where the, where those panels are going to be? Is it going to be towards, towards Main Street? Is it going to be out towards?
Yeah, Zach, can you maybe show there on your map exactly where?
Is it Main Street, right here?
Yeah.
So it's going to be from Main Street West, really?
How far?
To the hangers, roughly?
Past the
There, past the hangers?
Past the hangers.
A little bit past the hangers?
Past the hangers?
Still way away from
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm just trying to, you know, and I know there's, beyond that, there's other land that gets, that gets farmed, so, okay, that, I just didn't know the scope of it, and then the power, well, whatever, so, anyway, that was my question.
The power, actually, can you, Zach, can you show us where
The inverters
Where the inverters are and the power hookup is to the grid? It looks like it's going to go up north into Whately, but I'm not, it's not entirely clear.
Yeah, so if you guys flip to our civil site plan on sheet 4.01. You see where the road curves, and it says 16-foot proposed access road?
Uh huh.
To the left of there, there's a rectangular symbol.
Yeah, the inverter.
And that's, that's one of our equipment pads. Similarly, within the array, off of the access road, you'll see three
Three more.
Three more, and that's a combination of inverters, transformers, and battery containers.
Is that available to show on, up there?
Yes.
Just so you can show the folks in the audience, and then also on TV.
So we've got, do you guys see that? We've got equipment right here.
Hold this camera button.
Right here, right here, and right here, and that's inverters, transformers, and battery containers.
And that will go underground?
It will, it will go underground within the project area, and we've got some poles here at the end of our access road.
So it will connect roughly at CNA Repair, at that line right there? And can I ask another question?
Sure.
Sorry.
Yeah.
The road itself, I mean, there is a road now that goes to the hanger, so is that the road that's going to be improved, or is this a different access road that you're building?
Within the site, we're building our own access road. The name of the road here isn't labeled, I think it's a dirt road or gravel road. We'll build that up all the way to our site entrance.
You're going to enter from that existing road?
Yeah, and it'll
That's, that's what I
It'll be
It's for, to get the hill there and
Absolutely, yeah. And if it's not adequate for our construction equipment, we'll use compacted gravel.
Sorry.
Okay, so anyone else? Comments or questions? And just identify yourself, please.
John McClellan, I live at 497 Main Street, and again, I'm not necessarily opposed or in favor of the project, but I have some concerns and questions.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess
Can you just, 49 Main Street is where in relationship to the property?
It's right, this project is right in my face. This is my project, my property right here, so.
Yeah, show us, are you the, this house right here?
No, I don't have my house.
Yeah.
There's farther down.
Next one down, okay, okay.
Right there in my
Okay, all right.
So we're on the topic of the electrical infrastructure improvements necessary. Is there any upgrades to the transmission system in the public right of way?
Not that we know of yet. The utility, we've submitted our interconnection request to the utility, and they're studying it, but we don't have results yet.
Okay, I mean, is there a possibility that that would be something that was significant?
If, if there's not enough capacity for us on the feeder, we will upgrade it and incur those costs personally.
What does that mean? Does that mean much bigger poles, bigger wires? I mean, does it, does it look, to the casual observer, does it look much different than what's there now, or what?
No, it doesn't look much different, it's just newer upgraded infrastructure, slightly bigger wires possibly.
Going where? Going completely, because I assume the power goes north from there, because nothing, it doesn't go, doesn't go south, so I guess, how long, I mean, if you're upgrading, how much of an upgrade, and how far do you have to upgrade?
That's a good question. We will know soon, hopefully.
But regardless, is the upgrade going to the north on, where Main Street and River Road meet, they change names, or is it?
There's, there's no wires.
There's a gap in the wire, where the airport runway used to be.
Yeah.
Is this power three-phase or single-phase?
Three-phase.
Three-phase, so there is no three-phase there, though, right?
No.
So how far is the three-phase away from there?
Utility has that information. I think it's under, it's under 3,200 feet.
So you'll have to build three-phase two there?
Yeah, it's, it's over a million dollars a mile, so. And we're prepared to, here for that.
So you don't know where the, where the three-phase is north of there?
Not exactly.
Does it have morse?
Half a mile, maybe.
Does Morse have three-phase?
Does Morse have three-phase?
I don't know.
I thought there was a fox just passed.
I don't know. But if he doesn't, now it's a lot better for him.
I don't know.
Better
Do you have three-phase?
We don't have three-phase.
We have three-phase on Depot Road, but I think it ends at Depot Road, right.
So is it fair to say that if, that the three-phase would head to the north, that you would come out of your parcel, and then these upgraded lines would go to the north?
Yeah, and aesthetically speaking, if that's a concern, because there's no wires, there really no changes. I mean, it's, it's not going to look like long-distance distribution lines or anything like that, it's just upgraded infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a couple more.
Sure.
I guess the next one is, you know, this thing is, when I look out my third-story bedroom window, I mean, I see nothing but acres of panels, so I'm wondering, is there any issues with glare off the things, for example, that anyone has any experience with?
Well, I have panels on my house, and I don't see any glare coming off of those. I don't know. I, I've not noticed that, like, when I, you know, when I go by the ones that we have behind where the bard wells used to live, you don't, they're sort of a darker, they're like an opaque color, they don't tend to glare up. I mean, it, there may be a little bit of, you may see, if we ever see the sun again, we might, you might notice it on the, but I don't know. I mean, that's a good question. I don't, I don't see any glare off of the ones that we have, and, and I've not noticed them when I've looked at some of the other sites, but, but I'm not like, like you would, I'm not three stories up looking down.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, they're designed to capture the light, not reflect it, but
Right, right, exactly.
But it'd be nice to understand those impacts, if there are any.
Zach, are you, can you speak to that?
Yeah, yeah, like you said, you know, they're designed to absorb as much light as possible, there's a little bit of reflection, but it shouldn't be an issue. If it is, we can do a glare analysis and have an engineer work on that. Typically, it's never been an issue for any of our putters, so. Clearly, that's anecdotal, but, I mean, the only time we've ever had to do glare analyses are when we're near airports or military operations, and it's never
Kind of what I have is a control tower overlooking this thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess that my other concern is screening, you know, that goes along with the same thing. So you've mentioned that there's screening in front on the roadside?
Yeah.
Do you have anything planned besides a chain-linked fence along this outside?
Nope, we're going to rely on the natural vegetative buffer, trees, grasses, everything that's in there. It's
There isn't any.
Okay.
Is there forest there, some woods there?
No, not, not.
Not by the, there's forest, at least if, there's forest in the back, but, so, it looks like it goes back, I don't know, a couple hundred feet to pass this first house, which is Swazlowski House, and then, and then you're the next house down, is what you're saying, okay.
So I would propose that we bring the cedar decorative fence down and around the array, and we could enhance that with vegetation, so, I mean, if you want to work together on that, you know, let's talk about evergreen species and what the fence will look like, and we're happy to do that.
So Zach, it would seem to be appropriate that that come back, perhaps at least to the, this third stanchion that you have here on the south side?
Okay.
Which would be, I mean, it doesn't make sense, right, to go past where you're into the woods, right, because, but
Correct.
Right, so it would be about that third stanchion on this map, if you look back. It looks like that pretty much captures, or maybe the second one, if you could take a look at that map, the second, you see the, see the second
Yeah, that's, that's far enough there.
The second
My house is at the back, very back of that front lot.
This one?
See where there's a jog in the property line?
Yeah.
It's the, it's down right on the bottom of your sheet there.
Okay.
So the second one?
So this one?
The second one?
No, no, that farther.
This one?
So that, if you, I mean, that one would be fine, that'll screen.
Okay, yeah, so let's
The issue would be the height of it, though.
Right. Well, it's a six, I think it's six foot, right?
So that's going to do nothing.
No, it's six foot on the cedar, but then the trees, the trees will be on the outside of that.
So I mean, I think trees would be the
Right, right, but I think cedar would be helpful, too, because you're not looking at a chain-linked fence.
Yeah, it's seven feet.
Seven feet, okay.
I guess one final question?
Yeah.
I just wonder if there's been any consideration to locating this on, you know, farther back on the site, which would kind of get rid of some of these concerns.
Well, I think that, from what I heard Zach say, and I'm, that that would get them even further into this hydric soil area, is that part of the issue?
Yeah, hydric soils, wetlands complexes
Yeah, the wetlands, if you were to look at these maps, being 100 feet away from the, their wetland delineation line, if you look at, on the map closely, the further back you get, you're, you're eating into that 100-foot wetland buffer that's required.
Is that, is that, now what about this, up here? Where you're going down, down here, what about if it was shifted into, is this?
That's Whately.
That's Whately, so the line
Someone else. So the hangar is located in Hatfield or Whately?
No, near Whately. That's Whately.
Okay, that, this is the border, then?
Yeah, that's the border, that's the town line.
Town line.
Town line, yeah. Darryl?
The panels, I'm assuming are going to face, are going to be tilted south?
Yes, so they'll face this gentleman's property?
They'll face John's, John's property.
Right.
And are, sometimes panels, they make them somewhat movable for the sunlight, are these going to be very stationary, are these going to be stationary? Are these going to be very stationary, are these going to be stationary?
They'll be fixed, no tracking?
No tracking, okay.
John, are you?
That's all I got.
Okay, anyone else? Bernie?
Bernie Smorowski, Teddy Smorowski Farm, forty-seven Main Street. We'd like to see this stay in farmland. I know it's a wet year, but according to the NRCS soils maps, there's Winuski soils there and they're excellent for farming, although a wet year was a tough year for everybody. But we'd like to see it stay in farming, in agricultural land.
Well, Bernie, you know how I feel about that because of my position and work that I did for many, many years. I would like to see it stay in agriculture as well. My concern is that if this project were to not go forward, what the alternative might be. I mean, there's sixteen-hundred feet of road furniture out there, which, let me make sure I have that right.
Would it perk though?
Doesn't sound like it, that's for sure.
There's no, no town sewer there.
No town sewer, but, but if it's Winuski soil, which is a prime soil, right? I mean, it, it would seem like if it didn't.
It is a high-water table.
Yeah, easy enough to.
It's good soils, but with a high water.
Easy enough to.
It's got clay there, I'm not low.
Excuse me?
It's got a lot of clay, very shallow clay. So, the topsoil is not a lot of topsoil. It's clay and it's hard, it's hard to grow stuff there, even on a normal year. It's only, you only get a good crop of certain things if it's a dry year. If it's a normal year, it's too wet for it and nobody wants to rent it. You know, and if I, if nobody rents it, it goes wild, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to maintain the land. I'm a farmer myself, I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't want to get rid of farmland, but this, this land is really not that good for farming, it's not, it's not good for farming. The stuff in the back is better, the L, back in the L, is good farmland. And, and of course, we want to keep that in the farmland, farmland.
The land.
The runway where the airport is, that part is just not good in the farmland.
Well, Mr. Chang, since you have the floor, what would be, what would be an option then for you if this project were not to go forward?
Well, I would keep trying to rent it somebody to, to maintain it, but it is hard, it is very difficult.
Any good for growing hay, Darryl?
I was going to say, being the only dairy farmer around, it, it is good corn and hay ground. And we kind of make our living, I mean, aside from the land we own, we are able to grow corn and hay on soils such as this, even this year, which was difficult. We managed to, to walk through it. So, I mean, I support Bernie, I mean, this is good farmland, I, you hate to see it, hate to see it go. I certainly don't want to see it go to houses, but, which I don't think it ever would, but, but yes. I mean, we grow corn and hay on ground like that, so.
I, I guess I would just add to it, I, I agree with you guys, but that it, it's, it's not going to be solar forever and we'll try to keep our impact as minimal as possible. And when we come back twenty-five years from now, we'll pull the, you know, pull the piles out and recycle everything, take it with us and the soil should still be intact.
So, I, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's not sixteen-hundred feet of furniture, it's eleven-sixty-five, I inverted the six and the one. It's eleven-sixty-five in road furniture, so not quite twelve-hundred, so not quite six houses, but five A and Rs if, if they were able to get them to perk or put in a, a raised, raised system. I mean, I agree with you, I mean, if we can keep this in agricultural use and there's someone that could farm it, then all the better. I'm challenged, I'm, I'm here in front of folks that I've worked with and talked with for years about preserving farmland, but if, if there's, if the alternative to this is potential houses and we're looking at a twenty-year temporary use perhaps with spike systems.
Twenty-five, you said, right?
Twenty-five. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm really challenged by this, because if it also means that there is additional income then coming into a farm, that means that the rest of their farm ground stays viable. You know, it's a little bit like the dairy farmer in Vermont with the maple syrup operation, that's what gets them through the season. But, I, I don't know, Sherry, Shelley, you were going to say something?
Yeah, Shelley Slawski, my family owns the farm that we bought from the Ziegmont family. I'm all for the solar. I just think aesthetically, if you had to keep the solar there, I would pull away from that main road, like, where the entry road is there, back, kind of protect that whole landscape.
Their corridor there?
Yeah, because it's, it's a very lovely view and it would give you options in the future also if you pushed it back a little bit further.
How would you feel about a hundred feet?
That's not enough.
No.
A hundred feet back off of the road?
I'm just saying, there's, there's a lot of land there, you know, if you, if you were able to.
On Main Street, you're saying?
Yeah, so, you know, where you have your access road there coming in?
Right here.
Yep.
That's Waitley, that's a problem, that would be Waitley.
No.
No.
They're talking about, I think she started about Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, Main Street.
If you move it back, eventually it's Waitley. See, the property line diagonally crosses it.
Right, but I'm saying if you move the whole project or eliminate the panels in the front and incorporate them maybe back, I don't know what your intentions are with the Waitley piece.
They have their own solar park there.
Oh.
Zach, where, can you give an, an idea as to where a hundred feet would be off of Main Street?
Yeah, a hundred feet off of Main Street is probably about there. And so, that would be fence line then?
Well, a lot would have to be two-hundred by two-hundred, so you'd want to be a minimum.
You know, be at least two-hundred, maybe three-hundred feet.
Yeah.
I'd rather see houses there on the road.
Yeah.
You would rather see houses there?
No, no.
Along the road, within the panels.
But one of the options is, is along the Main Street corridor, you could actually, you could, you could farm that first section, because it's relatively close to Main Street. It's, it's not as wet as, as you get farther back and so.
That's another option.
It's, it's an option to buffer it before you put your fencing up, I, I don't know.
Yeah, so Joan, Joan Cox actually mentioned that when the, Zach was here for the informal conversation, she was here and she mentioned the idea of actually having more of a farm scape as part of the, the, the buffer. You know, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I, I find that surprising that you'd rather have five houses along there as opposed to a well-screened solar panel.
As opposed to twenty-five acres.
Yeah.
I'd much rather see solar panels, but so.
Twenty-nine acres is.
Well, if you look towards the river, it's beautiful, you don't have, you just look east. I love solar panels, I like everything, you know why I like solar panels? Because I built a net-zero home, a duplex in South D'Agro, and I, and it is, so I look at it, I go, wow, that space there, you know, nobody can visualize how much weight, energy they weigh, you know, fuel they burn or electricity. They can't figure that in terms of amount, right? But I can say, well, this much space there, and holy shit, this space there. Powers my whole home for the whole year. It's, it's a net-zero home, that's great, I mean, that's why I see solar panels, I love it. It's like, great, clean energies, I think of it as beauty.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm totally, I'm not against it at all, but I'm just saying, you have to take into consideration the, the, the view, the.
So, so, here's enough, okay, so I'm, go ahead, Paul.
I have a question.
Does this have to be a, what is it, a five-megawatt, five-megawatt?
Right.
Yeah.
Can, can it be, like, if you, what if you cut this off?
Exactly, Paul.
Huh? What if you cut this first section of, of, I don't know how many feet that is back from the main road, but if you cut that back, how, what does that do to the rest of the project? Does it go from a five, five to a four or to three or a one or I, you know, you tell us.
It'd probably go to four or three, and I, I haven't modeled it at that size, so I, you know, I, I don't know if it works. To be perfectly honest, five is kind of the, the sweet spot, but I understand, you know, we're, we're going to be here for twenty-five years, you guys live here, so, I mean, whatever we have to do, I, I want to find a middle ground, but I do know at a certain point, it's just not going to work. So, I mean, we can't, we can't get rid of half of it.
Yeah, I mean, if you're putting in a million dollars for these, for this upgrade of the line, so, go ahead, Mike.
I'm just wondering why, why there's a, why is the whole project in Hatfield with that ninety-five acres there? Why isn't it, why is the, why are you using a parcel like that?
Versus.
Going into the Waitley half of the property.
Oh, that's a good question, this is, this is what we.
Is there a reason or is it just happenstance?
That's a good question, I mean, I think that there, there's probably a reason for it.
Well, the gentleman back here in, in the line were just saying we don't want to be in Waitley. So, that's my, that's my question.
I heard that Waitley has their own solar park, so maybe that's why. They have their own solar, they put their own solar city or park, what do they call it?
Well, they have a real big one to the north, to the west of ninety-one, there's a real big one.
There's a new one there on Christian, is it Christian Lane?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a new one there.
Did you also say that you felt like the soils were better to the north of the, in the Waitley side? You said.
No, to the left, to the south, so you go to the end and then the L, like that, go around in the back.
Which your butts are a property back there.
That's good soil, that's good soil over there.
All right, go ahead, Mike, so.
Do you have a, who, where, where, when, if this project goes through, do you have a outsourced that this power is going to be directed to?
Yeah, so, the utility will be the off-taker of the power.
The utility will?
Yeah, and so, you know, on paper, that electricity will be consumed elsewhere, but in reality, it will be consumed locally.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the utility is going to be.
Yeah, we have a utility off-taker.
Okay.
It's not going to benefit from it.
We have to tax it.
Well, other than, other than taxes, but it's, it's.
Most, most projects in green energy like this, you have to go out and find businesses that are willing to take, to purchase the property. And so.
Purchase the property or the power?
Excuse me, the, the power, purchase, like in our digester project, we had to go out and we had to find people to buy our, our energy. And so, are you saying that Eversource has signed a contract with you to buy the energy from you?
They're off-taking one hundred percent of it, yeah. So, they're required to under the Massachusetts SMART program and we will be qualifying this project through, for SMART and through SMART, Eversource has to off-take the power.
So, go ahead, Bernie.
If you cut it off right here and kept it that way and went into Waitley, you'd get your seven, but that's, that's the way I'd agree to it.
Bernie, can you show me, can you come up here and show us what you just did on this, on our maps?
Okay, roughly, the back of the Zalowski property, a straight line here and keep it back this way. If they have to go into Waitley, they do, but they're obviously staying out of Waitley for a reason. If they want to keep the seven, you know.
You mean the five?
They have to five, if they have to go down to three, they have to, but they could keep the five if they go into Waitley.
What if they started right here, came back to, went to the road, just cut this part off here?
To the access road, Shelley, to the access road, right?
Yeah, and then.
That's, what's that, a hundred and fifty feet, two-hundred feet?
I don't know.
I know you get better heated.
Still, it's, you know, to the back of Zalowski's property and still it's, you know, a lot of, a lot of view for John, John's house here. You know, if you came back here, you could still get your five.
Can you create a, a model, what a hundred foot would look like, you know, a, a AI model, like a video model? Maybe, just, just talking about a hundred feet, what does that mean, or two-hundred feet, I don't know what, I mean, you have to see it, you know what I mean?
Mr. Chang, would you, would there be a problem if the project were shifted so that it did take in some of the Waitley ground?
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an issue for me, it's just I don't know if they can do it or not, yeah.
Well, these guys, but, but I mean, I, and then obviously, we know Waitley has allowed solar projects on farm ground before, we've all seen them. You know, so here's the other thing for me that I'm challenged by is, you know, the, you know, the National Climate Assessment just came out, you know, last, last week and the impacts that it's having both on climate change and what that impact is going to have on agriculture, for example, as well as a lot of other things. And I don't want to dismiss the aesthetics, I think it's really important and if we can protect as much of this farm ground for farmland, that's perfect. By moving it back like we're suggesting, we are opening up all of the area that could have houses and we could lose all that ground.
Is there a need for houses in this area or not?
I would, I would not put houses there, I mean, if this project went along, I wouldn't put houses there.
And I don't think you're going to see anybody want to build a house in front of that.
It doesn't have to be two-hundred feet, right?
Well, okay, that's fine, I've seen people build houses in the oddest places. We aren't going to have a whole lot of control over those houses, because they'd be A and Rs, they'd be approval not required.
There was a house there.
Yeah.
There'd be.
Two there.
Right in the middle.
There was two there, wasn't there?
There'd be two, these would be two-hundred-foot road furniture lots. We wouldn't have a whole lot of control over someone putting five houses in there, just so you know. I mean, because it's, it's A and R and so, but, you know, aesthetics aside, we're going to have to, we got to figure out where we're going to get our power from at some point, right? I mean, we don't, we're all opposed to that, more that, not, I shouldn't say we're all opposed, but there's enough opposition in the region to natural gas, more natural gas lines, right? We're shutting down, we shut down the coal plant. People don't seem to want windmills. We got to get our power from someplace, so what you guys did, putting them on your roofs, absolutely wonderful. If, if we can find out a compromise for this, I would think that this could be doable, particularly given the requirements that we've set already, that it's got to be spikes, there can't be any grading or removal of topsoil. So, in twenty-five years, you yank this out, it could be.
Back to farm.
Back to farming right away, as opposed to us potentially losing it. I mean, I've seen subdivisions go into properties, they can engineer anything. You know, right, the guy on the end of the, I mean, we can, you can engineer almost anything and I'd hate to see us lose what otherwise is good Winuski soil permanently.
We wouldn't benefit at all, because the three-phase is going north and we're south of there. We have single-phase only at our farm.
Well, in terms of being directly able.
Get it there.
In, in terms of being able to directly draw from it, like I do on the panels I have in my roof, you're absolutely right, Bernie, but we draw from it writ large in the sense that if this five megawatts is replacing five megawatts that's coming from natural gas or from an oil-fired plant or from a coal-fired plant, it's all going into the grid. It's all, if it's not directly to your house, it's, what you're getting then is coming. So, it's, it all fits into the mix, there's no doubt about that. I mean, I don't want to push, we will tax this as a solar field as opposed to farm ground, so there is a little bit of, you know, there's additional benefit there to Hatfield having, that is a taxable product as opposed to the farm ground in sixty-one A, but it's probably not. But Zach, I mean, can you work some numbers here? I mean, I think, I don't want to dismiss the aesthetics, this is an absolutely gorgeous road. I mean, it's a beautiful road, a lot of it's been protected, it's, you know, it's probably one of the premier, you know, vistas in western Massachusetts in terms of farm ground. You know, I, I appreciate that you came right in saying you're going to put up cedar fencing. We don't have other solar, they want to just put up their chain-link fence and run away. I mean, cedar fencing is not inexpensive, but, I mean, if you moved it back further, probably wouldn't even need something, if it's, goes back far enough, you know, some arborvitae or whatever, people probably won't even notice it from the road.
Mrs. Ziegma? It doesn't have to be two-hundred feet if we're not putting houses there. So, would it help to move it back fifty feet or something?
Well, I only fifty feet is enough there.
Or maybe a hundred feet is enough, if you can, if you can come up with kind of a virtual reality, see what it would look like, because, you know, a pack of feet doesn't really mean anything. How do you know a hundred feet is on a, how do you know a thousand feet is on a, maybe, maybe a hundred is? If you actually saw it, you know, what, what would it look like, you know what I mean?
It's a moot point if you don't go to Waitley and see, you know. It's a moot point if you don't go to Whately and see, you know, what, what can be put there. If you can go, if you use the Whately land, you go back 300 feet, whatever it looks like there.
Or make it more than 5 megawatts. I mean, does it, does the economics improve the bigger it gets?
No, we're gonna cap it at 5. Yeah, and I'm, I'm not positive we can go to Whately, I'll look into that and see if it's been explored yet.
I mean, can, can you do that, Zach? Because we know that Whately has approved solar panels on farm ground. I mean, that one off of 91 is enormous. And so, it's not like they've been opposed to it, I don't know if they've... And that's actually something I was thinking about, that maybe, as we get more of these, and, and we know we're gonna get more of these, I mean, you know, whether it's you, Bernie, coming in with one of your poorer fields, or the Swazlowskis, or somebody, or even the Williamses, they're gonna say, "Hey, I've got a poorer field, I'd like to put some solar panels on it." Maybe what we should be looking at is capping how much solar we allow in Hatfield based on what Hatfield needs. Not that it's all gonna come to us, but it's easy enough to figure out how much power Hatfield needs for all its houses, right? You figure out how many people have solar panels on their roofs already, plus the two solar farms we already have, we could probably figure out that we can...
I don't know how you're gonna do that exactly, that, that'd be like capping the number of houses that you allow in town.
No, 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 but you could get a sense as to what we are right now, right? I mean, it, it's easy enough, I mean, right now, you could probably tell me how many houses 5 megawatts can run, right? I mean, there's, there's sort of numbers to that, right? A 5-megawatt system runs 100 houses for a year, I don't know what it is. So, I mean, there's a way for us to look at, figure that out. Yeah, Bernie?
I've heard it mentioned a couple times, the, the large solar field by 91, that is not nearly as big as this, this is 29 acres, those are probably 12.
Yeah. No, but my, yeah, my point is, is that Whately has obviously dealt with solar panels on farm ground and has approved solar panels on farm ground, so it's not like there's a moratorium or they're in opposition to it. So, that's why I think it's worth exploring, if it can, some of it can go into the Whately side.
Definitely, I'd agree.
The one on, a new one, I think it's, what is that, Christian Lane?
Yeah.
In Whately?
Yeah.
Is, is that, is that power gonna be sold to the grid, does anybody know? I mean, is, is Whately gonna benefit from that, it's coming back to Whately, or is that...
I heard that's being sold to like, to the residents of Whately or something, I don't know. So, so, so you don't have that solar roof to handle?
Some respects goes to the grid, I mean, even the stuff from my roof...
I know, because what you're not using is going.
It just goes to the grid, I mean, it, you know, I get paid for it, but it just...
This title of, to me, the title of this project, Hatfield Community Solar Garden, you know what it sounds like to me? Sounds like everybody in the community's gonna get, get some solar energy. We're all, all the residents that live in Hatfield are gonna benefit from this. In, in essence, I understand what you're saying, but it means like, okay, my electric bill's gonna go down now.
Well, no, it's never gonna go down. It's just, it's just, you're just getting your electricity from a different source.
I know, but...
Yeah, Mike, or Paul, you had a question?
Yeah, Mrs. Zigma, you may or may not wanna answer this question, and you can say no, okay? And Shelley may know off the top of her head. How far was your north boundary from Main Street till it took a left and went down south? Your north boundary on your property, do you remember?
No, I think, well, we went out, I don't know, but we went out as far as the woods, but...
Yeah, but you don't know by, in foot?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Paul, on this map, 1 inch is 150 feet.
Oh, really? Well, that solves the problem.
So...
1 inch is 150 feet. So if we clop that at 150 feet, we would eliminate the 200 feet for building lots. That would be an interesting situation here.
I think we could probably do that.
If you could do that. If you could, if you could figure out to go back to that road that you put in here, your access road, I think everybody would be pretty much calm about this thing. But, we've gotta know that dimension, you can't do it by Bernie gussing 200 feet.
Yeah.
You gotta know that dimension to give you your answer, whether it's a 3-megawatt deal or a 4-megawatt deal or a 5. If you can lop that off, I think everybody would be happy with that, and it wouldn't have to be right at that point of Shelley's northwest...
Is that 278 feet?
Where?
Where Frank...
Oh, maybe it is, where'd you find that, Paul?
See this on the last page? 202...
Yeah, it's 278 feet.
208, 200, yeah, 278 feet.
You see the jog around the house?
Yeah. To a, to a cement, whatever it is.
See the jog?
It's cement bound.
That's 278 feet.
And then it comes back 185?
It would be 200 at the end of their grid, if you look at it, it would be 200.
That's what 200 looks like, what, right about where that road is, almost.
Yeah, yeah, right about...
See what Whately will say.
Well, that's where you pick up, that's where you pick up the rest of the five.
A lot of it can go in Whately, you can go back further.
So, Zach, what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually, I think we should...
I was going to. Go ahead, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, we need a motion to, to, well, first of all, we need a motion to close a public hearing. I need a motion to close a public hearing.
Well, go, go ahead.
And then we, 'cause then we have to deliberate and decide, and then we can extend. We first have to close this hearing. So I get a motion to close a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike. Our administrative assistant is catching these notes, so... Okay, any discussion? All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay, so now, we're in our deliberation phase. I, I think we should close, continue the public hearing to another meeting.
Yeah, 'cause there's too many questions here. There's the wetlands question, there's the wetlands question up here, there's, can you get rid of this front and still live with your project? I mean, there's a lot of questions, plus we got the 61A deal, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on here that we don't have answers to before we make a, you know, yes, no here, I think.
I, I would like to see a, I'd like to see a decision by the Conservation Commission.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking for, too.
I mean, a final approval from them to say, yes, this infringes on the wetlands, or doesn't infringe on it. The third-party review of the site by Mr. Hennessy as part of that. Are we in the, what is it, a Vesper Sparrow?
Yeah.
Are we, are we destroying the Vesper Sparrow habitat, property in 61A?
We never discussed that.
The electrical upgrade is gonna go north or south? That's all, that's only, those are the things that I have questions for.
Well, then also, as Paul said, can you bring this back? Either keeping it all in Hatfield and being happy with that size project, or moving into Whately to get your full 5 megawatts?
Okay.
And pull it back to approximately, I mean, I think if you drew a line from where your access road comes in, draw a straight line from that to that jog, to the point in the jog. You see what I mean?
We'll show you.
You see, you see what I mean? Because that would be...
Back of the Swazlowski property.
So if you, if you drew a line like, a straight line like, like that to there.
Well, that's 200...
Because this is 278 feet right here, if you drew it there, that's probably 200 feet there.
Just model it out and see if it works.
Yeah, so just see what that looks like if you come like that.
I take that all up, but goddamn, that's, that's, that's a quarter of a deal. No, it isn't, it isn't a quarter.
No, it's not a quarter.
No, it's not a quarter.
It's about a fifth.
Yeah, it's not a quarter, I looked at it, no, it's not a quarter by anybody. They could turn that and put that, if they extended them four, I think they have it probably.
I mean, it may end up, Zach, that you don't have a whole lot needing to go into Whately and still get your 5 megawatts.
There may be a way of doing that.
And then that does set the, set it back further away from the road.
I'll, I'll look into the Whately question.
And to the, and to the farmers in the audience, I mean, we would, we would not allow, at least while I'm on the board anyway, I mean, I guess I could, I'd be overruled by my other members, but I would not, I would vote for any project that it's always spike and always pervious surface on the roads, that there's, so that, basically, you can pull these out in 25 years and just start farming again.
Who's gonna be here in this room to, to gauge them in 25 years? I almost wasn't here in September, so, I mean, give us a shot here, you're gonna be...
You gotta think positive.
I asked the same question at the last solar project, and everybody went, huh? What, what do you mean? Well, we gotta get some kinda way to know that it's gonna happen.
Not ready to go yet.
So, you're saying, to be clear, you're saying less than 200 feet, so that they can't build houses?
Well, so if you, if you go to that, if you go to that line and go straight across, that jog is 278 feet back from the road.
Right.
And so, the other, so the other, the other one at the north end is probably 200 feet from the road?
Mm-hmm.
So that's, you know, essentially what a house, a house lot would be, 200 by 200. So that's back from where a house lot would be.
Okay.
We got too many balls in here, we gotta get...
But, actually, and to be fair, we, we actually established a policy a number of meetings ago that we actually don't wanna act on anything until after, if there's a Conservation Commission question, we're not gonna act on anything until that's decided.
Okay.
So, we probably would've had to have extended this hearing anyway, just because there's still some unanswered questions with Conservation Commission.
Yeah, that's great.
And then, Mr. Chang, if you would check into the Chapter 61A issue, because I, I do believe you're gonna get bumped out of the program, 'cause the state is not gonna consider this to be a continuation.
Well, I understand that, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, so...
And we will come back with a revised plan set, and we can wrap the cedar fence all the way around. Do you guys want...
Well, if you do the, if you do the, if you do the, if you do what you're talking about, you're gonna need, the cedar fence isn't, you're not gonna have as much cedar fence on that, on your side, on the south side, because you're gonna be starting further back.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I mean, you could... How would people feel if, in the front, it was just evergreens, as opposed to even the fencing, since it's that far back? I mean...
I don't know if you went all the way with, just for the audience and the folks at home, is that when we had our preliminary meeting a couple months ago, one of the residents, Joan Cox, suggested this possible screening would be, since, since this is the entry to Hatfield, and you're coming down, and you see a beautiful field on this side, you see a beautiful field on the right, you see, you know, every, every year, you see something different growing. I know a lot of cucumbers used to be raised up there, corn's been raised up there. And this, this space that we're talking about possibly removing is that somebody was growing some vegetables there, or, or corn. You could have a screening there with maybe the arborvitae or the fence, but as somebody from out of town comes driving in, and you got, you got corn, that corn that grows, cow corn or whatever they call it, feed corn, it's, it's eight or 10 feet high, you wouldn't, would not see that, but, but to keep it in, in line with the farming aspect of, of Hatfield, and that's, and in our long-term, our long-range plan, and the, you know, the, the majority of the people in Hatfield, if you look at our master plan, they want open space, they want farmland, they wanna see the farms, the cows, the potatoes, the cucumbers, as we've been since 1670, is basically a farming commune. So, that, that's a possibility.
Well, if you, so, one of the farmers in the room, if you could eyeball, if that whole front half, front area was kept open, what is that, about four acres, maybe? Bernie, take a guess on that one.
200 by, 200 by, what'd you say?
Oh, 1100 feet, yeah, so that's 200,000 square feet? Yeah, it's 5 acres, 4 to 5 acres?
Yeah.
So that would be, I mean, Bernie, you said you like that?
It's enough to grow hay, it's not a problem.
All right, so, Mr. Chang says he's been having trouble getting someone to rent this. I hear a couple people here saying they're willing to rent it, so...
Only in a dry year, though. While the wet year goes to the corn.
Okay, are we good?
We're good. Do we need to make a motion on that? So...
Well, we may, so we're, we're gonna make a motion to extend the hearing, and we'll do it in Jan, we'll do, you think you'll be ready by Jan? What, how are you doing with the Conservation Commission? You can talk to Wilma about that.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Will we be notified in the next meeting?
Yes, yes, 'cause there'll be an extension of the hearing, yeah, right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take, so I get a motion to extend the, the hearing on the Hatfield Community Solar Garden project...
So moved.
...to a future date. We've given our instructions to the applicant, Zach, you're okay? Do I have a second? I have a...
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay. So, a motion was made by Paul Labby, seconded by Michael Pachek, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, unanimous. Okay, all right, thank you for coming, Mr. Chang, thank you for coming, thank you all for, it's important to have people come to these hearings, we often have few people, but, thank you. Very constructive, yes, thank you, Shelley. Thanks. All right. We have only one other thing to talk about. And that is... Wilma did not provide us, she sent us minutes, but she didn't provide them here, so...
I gotta...
Oh, no, we do have the minutes, we have minutes, yeah, we got them, we have them. So we're gonna go through these minutes, and then... Hey, excuse me, if you guys can go out in the hallway, that'd be great, okay? Daryl, Daryl, and can you guys go out in the hallway and do this, we're still on, on live, thank you. So while we're doing, while you're looking through these minutes, we have a meeting with the Board of Select, Select Board on December 19th, at which we need a quorum, I can be there.
I will be there, I will be there.
Okay, so, and if, Michael, if you can be there, that's when we will vote along with them on the addition of Steph Slush.
She accepted the deal?
She did.
Good.
And, and also, of interest to you, maybe, that the Board will also be taking up the recommendation that we have made, the Ag Commission and the Conservation Commission have all made, for the Board to investigate exercising the right of first refusal on that Sluzwoski property off of North Hatfield Road. And that's gonna be taken up by the Board on, on the 19th, remember the...
Oh, yeah, 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 yes. Mikey Mendick was doing it, right, okay.
That'll be taken care of at that meeting. And also, I will pass along, it's, was sent to the Board of Selectmen, so I know that it's public knowledge. Mr. Sluzwoski sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen indicating that while he knows he's selling the property, and he has an offer, he's not opposed to the town considering exercising its right of first refusal.
Oh, he's not opposed to it?
He's not opposed to it.
Oh, good, okay, good. I don't know if the town's gonna bite, but...
But, we'll see.
Yeah.
If they accepted that, they would buy that property?
Well, they can, they can transfer the right of first refusal to the Kestrel Land Trust. Kestrel Land Trust then would potentially buy the property and then work out some kind of an arrangement to, you know, get some...
Do they have to buy it for the 4 million? Do they have to buy it for 430? 430,000?
They have to match that offer.
Well, that's not so bad.
Yeah.
That's not so bad, really, to the 430.
Then it would stay open and...
Yeah, it would stay.
Well, they would need, they would, they would be looking at then, seeing if they could sell easements on it to the state or the town through the CPA, and then also, potentially selling the underlying protected property to a farmer. So, all right, so the minutes of November 7th, this was our hearing on the Treeworks. This was our hearing on Treeworks project, the marijuana establishment out on Route 5 and 10. So, there's copious notes here regarding our conditions, and, and I will report that they, they met with the Board of Selectmen yesterday, and they, you know, my understanding was is that they were completing the, the cooperative agreement with the Board for that project to enable them to come into town, assuming that they get their... Now they... Cannabis Control Commission license.
Yeah.
So nobody, did they, we approved the public here, we... So nobody, did they, we approved the public, we approved the project. And I presume the 20, 20-day appeal period is over.
No, we still got some answers coming, right?
Well, we approved it pending that they get the license and that we would review it in a year and that also they, uh, delivered documentation to us from the Board of Health about the septic, the septic system.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I think they got to put a sewer in.
Actually, um, my wife is a, she's a Santerian. She said when it's change of use, the septic has to go in.
Has to be. Has to be, uh.
It's automatic, it has to be hooked up to the sewer, if the sewer is there.
Oh, because the sewer is there.
It's there.
Right, okay.
Oh, so they have to do that.
That's what she said.
This is stub on the property. Now, now in the meantime, can they apply for their, for their license?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But we don't know if they've done that with the, with the.
With the state.
With the Cannabis Control Commission?
I think they have, yeah, yeah.
They must have.
Yeah. We talked to Mr. Brusko about his property and whether or not he had enough road frontage. We have not heard back from him. And then Mr. Fallon of Goggins, uh, Real Estate came in along with Tony Graves and others from Hauschka Skincare to talk about informally their thoughts about the Trinity Church and retrofitting that to office space.
I think that's a good idea, I really do.
I do too.
I think it's a good idea.
And we nominated, uh, Mr. Poshack and he agreed to be the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission representative. I'm assuming, uh, since then, Wilma has alerted PVPC of that. You'll get notices directly from them.
Yeah, I'll have to check with her.
And then, uh, and then we also then discussed the recommendations for a planning board replacement for Rick Bertram and selected or recommended Steph Slush to the Select Board and that decision will be made on December 19th. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes of November 7th as presented?
So, so moved.
Michael, second?
Second.
Paul Labby? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, hearing none, they're accepted. So we are done with our business unless there's anything else that anyone needs to bring up.
So our next scheduled meeting is for.
Is that first.
Second, you better come in here not hungover, not hostile.
Yeah, January 2nd.
And this guy over here.
The 19th, December 19th.
I can't drink, so you can't pin it on me, buddy.
Okay, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Thank you very much, good night.